He's in the building.
I've got to talk to Brett about this one. Say about this.
Don, you have no glasses.
It's like a highlighter.
This is our new uniform.
Is it?
Hope.
No, they're fine.
You'll be using this spot on the heat.
And I have cheap pants, you got good ones now?
I wonder.
Hey, and we got all this extra room.
There you go.
Get along. David just opened.
Well, I take my tail.
Okay, let's call our special meeting order and I have a free deal. Anyone need any yellow fly.
Good morning to all. Special meeting. We have three hours. All of you. You have a rest this morning. First, we will take the budget. On microphone here. We're going to, I'll direct over to Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I gave you a handout, a listing of items that the county staff budget review committee.
Referring to this one.
Yeah, that's that one. And we met, we've met several times this year. Chairman's been at all the meetings. We, we're looking at early on, I think the first time we met, the property appraiser, Mitch, talked to him earlier, he said very well may not be here today. But he'd give us indication that it may be like a 3% increase in property values. Talked to him about a week ago, he said less more like 2%. But the, you know, it's easy math, 3%, that would, that would give us, if you didn't change the miller's rate, that would give about $265,000 to deal with. But it's not 3%, it's more like 2%. So we're talking probably 200 or 190,000 to deal with. And we're saying, on our side, on the board's side, we're saying a lot of increases coming in, like Hickory. Hickory is going up this year and something typically you don't see go up, but Hickory's going up and others, um, FRS is going up for you this year. And you've probably got more than that just in board expenses going up. But, so what we're looking at, the reason, the last meeting of the county staff was a review committee, we were trying to look at some things that may save you some money. Some of these will save you some money directly, some will save you some money indirectly. And, Mr. Chairman, if we could go through one at a time.
Sure.
And some of these we're just asking for, if you allow us to go out, solicit proposals to see what cost may be. And those, you can, that'd be great. If you can't, that'd be great too. But the first one is solicit a payroll system to accommodate board employees. And instead of that way, we're not trying to get off into anybody else's business, any constitution officer's business, but on the, on the board's side, we spend a tremendous amount of time working payroll. And the thought is, don't know, we think it may be, it's the, the system we're working with, and if it was here when we all got here, it's not like anybody came up with this system to work with. We know there's simpler systems out to do payroll. We shouldn't be spending much time on payroll as we, we spend. And if the board will allow us to go out and see what might be available, and, and I would be the first to say, we don't, we don't want to change what we're doing unless we know we're going to save time and money. But look, see what's out there. Also, give us an opportunity to sit down with, with a clerk, talked to her yesterday, and we all around the table, the cheapest thing we do is talk, trying to figure out what we can do, what we can do to make it easier. And for the most part, time is eating a lot of our time. We take public works time, the ladies in public works working on payroll, and everybody else working on payroll. If the board will allow us to go out and look at what payroll might do and take proposals, and we'll come back to you later with, with recommendations. If board agree to that, we'll, we'll move forward.
Motion on that? All right. Motion by Commissioner Macklemore.
I'll, I'll second that. That's the easiest thing to do is to actually go out and.
Motion by Macklemore, second by Mr. Jaeger. Anybody out in the audience, if any, any other discussion with the board members have any opposition? If not, five and oh. Pursue that, please.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, next one is, we're recommending to solicit proposals from interested persons or firms to administer the county's shift program. And what we're talking about is taking admin money that the state of Florida allows us to take from a shift program funds and pay someone to pay a consultant to do this work. And the rea, the reason for it is, the money comes in, and, and I'll, I'll back up a little bit. It took, it took a little bit of time, like a couple of years' time, two or three years' time to clean up shift program when we took it back over. And probably three years ago, I'd say, don't ever let it out again. But we got it cleaned up, we get another allocation of money coming in July the first, you know, $350,000. We, we're allowed to take 10% of that money for admin costs. We do take some of that for audit costs. But, um, every day of the year, we have someone coming in, whether we have money or not coming in, to, to talk shift. And it would be great if the shift program could be coupled up with another housing type program. And that makes sense, that two, if we take proposal, we'll bring it back to you and with a recommendation for or against doing it. But idea is let a consultant handle shift program, pay it from shift funds, not from ad loan funds. And, and that will save a lot of people coming in, and especially if we could couple it up with another housing program, assistance program, whether it's a some program or some program, that it might, one could be leveraged against the other one. So if we could, if you allow us to go out and take proposal, see what's there, see what consultants may have to offer, and let someone run shift program. And, and two, to say that we want to always keep shift files in this building, not let the original files go out. We're going, we're going to keep them here, unlike we did before. Your consideration.
I'll call for them. Butler, I know because I've worked a lot with shift along with these other commissioners here, and our people on our staff wear multiple hats. And right in the middle of working with a shift, you get a phone call about an insurance issue, and it is mind boggling. The shift program, you need, it takes just about 100% concentration on it. Lot of paperwork, lot of paperwork, a lot of time, and a lot of questions here. If we can find someone, and again, as you stated twice, it, tax money, their salary is factored in. Uh, I think that would be something we need, he has found a good person who wants to do that. And I think it, not only would it help us, it would help the people that's applying for these homes. They would have someone directly that that's all they dealt with. So anyway, so much for that. I have a motion. A motion by Commissioner Smiley.
Second.
Got a second here by Commissioner Bryan. All right, as we, look from anyone in the audience, other discussion on this? All right, if no opposition, uh, number two passes five and oh. Mr. Butler, look into that, please.
Okay. We will bring that back to you. Uh, the next item is, is to institute a board policy to do the minimum required in order to meet statute for advertising tax certificates. And what we're speaking of, we, we have to, the county commission has to front the money to pay for the advertising. And if the advertising rate was less, you would have to front, you wouldn't have to front that much money. Uh, and two, the, the people that would help, uh, in the end would be those that having a hard time paying taxes. And if they could get a break on the cost of advertising, then they won't have to pay that, that cost. So for the board's consideration, other counties have done it, to allow us to look at the most inexpensive way of meeting statute and, and advertising tax certificates.
Don, didn't Bay County do this?
They did, a couple of years ago, they did.
I agree. It would, I think we at least need to evaluate it.
And we'd like to, and Mr. Attorney would have to do the work to determine if there's something we could even do more than what Bay County did. Maybe if we could advertise on the internet, on the county website, or something that even be cheaper than what Bay is doing. It's some way to, to, it, it would help the people that's having a hard time paying taxes.
Sure. All right, the key to this thing is the Florida statute. What, we'll do what they, they would have to do, and that's it. We'll do what we say, and we'll stay what we do. All right, we got a.
Second. I'll second.
All right, we got a motion over by Commissioner Macklemore, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Anyone from the audience, any discussion here with board members, any opposition to this? Motion pass five and oh. Look, you and the attorney. All right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one, and certainly don't want anyone to read anything into this next one other than Houston has, has been running an admin system, he's doing a great job. Uh, it'd be hard to beat what Houston doing with admin system is for the level of service that he's providing. But same time, in, in this planned budget for October the first, there's a million and $50,000 of, one million and $50,000 of salary and benefits in the EMS budget. It's a 1.2 million dollar budget, so at least $150,000 for fuel and.
One million and 50,000, did I understand you correctly, salary?
Salary. Salary including benefits, one million and 50,000 dollars.
Loaded rate, and how much, the whole budget's 1.2 million.
1.2 million. And what would the budget review committee is saying is, if we could look at and just see what private enterprise could do the same job for. Last time we did it, they come in higher. But if we could go out and look see what private enterprise is doing, and if it's higher, we certainly don't want to do it. If it's considerable lower, then we might want to do it. But it'd be back for you, if you, you agree today to, to go out for proposals, we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
You go first. You know, we've looked at this a couple of times, and, and the reason that we started looking at it is because we were losing at one time about 800 to 900,000. That's directly supplemented by our property taxpayers, uh, by our ad loan taxpayers. And so I think, you know, I think we got to be careful with it. I, I'm all for, let's go, let's go out and see what the numbers are. Uh, we have somehow, when we changed the billing, uh, that saved us, and Michael argues with me a little bit on this, but I think it saved us four, four or 500,000. And, and, uh, so I, I think we continue to have to work on that number that, that we're having to supplement it. It's not standing on its own, and if, 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 if private enterprise operates it better, it sure would take us out of some of the issues with it. So I'm okay with at least going out for proposals to see what's out there.
Anyone else?
I, I agree. I think it's worth looking at and examining what the numbers are.
I, I'll, I'll put that form of a motion into.
A motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Commissioner Bryan. Hey, anybody from there? All right, I want to implement something. Mr. Butler, when we do this, keep in mind now, we've got to compare apples to apples. Uh, some ambulance service might, I know, I'm, I think we've got three petty vehicles sitting right over here, and I'm, that, it's called, they've got to give the same service, and they can't come in here and say, well, we can do it for $200,000, and we're going to use one ambulance to cover the whole county. So keep that in mind, tell them what we've got. Now, can you, we need a baseline to see, this 1.2 million, it's, it's right here. But we need something by going out, that'll give us maybe a baseline to see, are we low? Are we in line, or whatever? So just keep that in mind, that we, we can't deal with anybody that's just going to bring one vehicle in here and two people, and.
Okay.
And they're going to service care bell too.
Okay.
So let's, let's just keep apples to apples on this. All right, any other thing? No opposition, this one will be number one, two, three, four, passes five and oh. Okay, on EMS, next.
Mr. Chairman, next one is seek proposals from fuel being gasoline and diesel providers and/or allow quotes to be obtained from regional providers on an as needed basis. And what we're saying is, we, we buy fuel from one, one location here in Port San Jo. Um, we had a little issue, there was an issue a month or so ago where the, when the canal filled in, barges couldn't get in, fuel was short. And, and two, we think we see from time to time that the price we pay at the pump locally is the same or even higher every now and then than what downtown would be. What we're looking at is if we could go out and take quotes from anyone interested in providing fuel to us, and I know it'd be hard them to give us a quote on what fuel's going to cost, but if they could give us something no more than so many pennies above a certain rate, that would be it. Or if the board would allow us to monthly, weekly, whenever we need to, to call, there's a lot of providers around in the region from South Georgia to South Alabama, Florida, to, to provide fuel. We could probably buy fuel cheaper from time to time if we could shop around and still go in one place all the time.
Educate me, Don. What's our capacity? We got a capacity to get a tanker in here? 5,000 gallons?
We don't. That's something we're working on, Joe's got something in the budget, some equipment swapping around, selling equipment to, we, we need to be able to unload an entire truckload of diesel, entire truckload of gasoline. We don't now, we have 1,000 and 2,000 gallon.
Okay.
Capacity.
We're looking into.
Mr. Butler, it is, we should have, Mr. Danfor and I have been talking about this for going on four years, and it's, it would be a saving when you can buy a buck and you can shop around, but they can't drive from Duthon, Alabama, bring a thousand gallons down here if they're the low bidder, whatever. So you kind of caught between a rock and a hard, but let's, let's go look at that. I have a motion, this one.
Yeah, so moved.
Uh, got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Smiley. Anyone from the audience, or any other discussion on this? Opposition? This is five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, on the next one, about three years ago, we go out to the VoIP phone system, the internet based phone system. Uh, we had three year leases on our, our equipment. A lot of those will be coming off or can come off if we so choose. What we're looking at, if we could take proposal, AT&amp;T is doing the workforce now, if we could take proposal from anyone interested in providing telephone service, the internet services, telephone services to us, and leasing equipment to us on the VoIP system, we very well, and two, and provide some good, good service to us, we'd, we'd like to look at who may be out there willing to do it. It may not be anyone else other than AT&amp;T, but we'd like to be able to see if there's someone else that might could maybe give us a break, cost break on it, and provide some good service. Uh, and, and two, telephones eat a lot of our time, but telephone eats a lot of density time with IT. Uh, you just, the fact that the, the county IT person is handling all the phones for everybody in the county, for, for all county, and it's constitution officers. But, um, just see what might be out there, maybe it would save some money.
Good deal. So moved to proceed on that, Mr. Chairman. There's six.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Smiley. Want here, any further discussion? Opposition? Five and oh. Go out and see, anything that you can save us a dime, that amounts up to dollars.
Mr. Chairman, next one is, uh, we have talked about this before, and the budget review committee is not looking at this as a revenue generator, making, making money off of this. This will indirectly, by doing this, it will really indirectly save some time and money, and time is money. But the issue is adopting ordinance to require county business license for all businesses in unincorporated Gulf County. And if I could give you just a bad example without naming any names, someone goes in and they, they sort of, they are amazed they don't have to have a business license to start off with, but, but those that know they don't have to, they go in to set a business up, and they wind up putting the business in a, in a community where you shouldn't have that business, because there's, there's regulations where you, you can't put some things in a residential community. And, um, and they, they spent a lot of money on it, and then someone alerts us that they've got something going there, and, um, and they spent a lot of money, and they can't do anything with it then. It'd be a good time to, and it takes a lot of our code enforcement time, a lot of building department time, a lot of, a lot of my time, and, and it's, and a bunch of them countywide. If we could, if, I mean, maybe exaggerated, if you could give a business license away, not even sell it, if you would give it away, it would save you some money. Uh, because then no one should be in business without that license. If you had, if you charged $5 or $10 nominal fee just to cover the cost of homes, that would be great too. But, um, if you charge nothing for it, it would save you some, some time and expense as time goes on. We spend a lot of time on people that have gone into business, and then to come find out they don't meet the requirement, they're in the wrong place, and they shouldn't have done what they did, and they can't, some, some cases, they can't even have a business in that building, don't have handicap accessibility, one thing or another. And then the ones that really stand out is those that, um, you wake up one morning, you got a, you got a whole lot of traffic in your neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood that really shouldn't be there, the type of traffic coming through from oil trucks and one thing or another. And, and so it's, for the board's consideration, if we could look at the possibility of adopting a, a business license.
Question, Mr. Butler, would this, would this affect your everyday handyman, like want to come in and put a screen door in, or this?
This would affect those that try to locate in a building to run a business out of the building.
All right, you go, go ahead, I'll go later.
Which department?
We have, I would say we'd probably do it out of building, out of building department.
Mr. Butler, the, uh, and especially see Commissioner, the Commissioner, oh, back here. I know the city of Weewee, wherever reside, they have a occupational license, and it's just a flat, I think theirs is $55. Mr. David Rich, with the rich's IGA, he pays $55. The barber shop pays 50, they just got a straight across there. I, I don't know if St. Joe may have the type of business where they have a, you know, variable rates, I don't know. But the bottom line, it's not, as Mr. Butler said, we can give it away. It's not the money we'll not generate, but what it does, it does, it, uh, the state sometimes will ask for reports on how many businesses you've got in your county, and honestly, we can't tell them because there's businesses out there that we don't even know about. So this will give us, uh, uh, some documentation on who's, what type of business we got going on, and who's there, and if something goes wrong, we know, same way with these people come in, these, I, I don't know, I know they have a little, and it's wonderful, a little vegetable market they set up here in St. Joe. I'm sure that they probably have to have a little old city license to do that, but if something goes wrong, someone gets sick, or we come down with something, then we know who was selling cantaloupes or watermelons or whatever. It just gives us a, a paper trail on what we got in the county. So I'm not going to have any problem with it. Uh, all right, Mr. Macklemore, motion? Second by Commissioner Smiley. One else? Audience? Yes, Dave, go ahead.
I am not in favor of a business license. I think we have other rules and regulations in place. I, I believe that appropriate business in a residential neighborhood, that is a zoning issue, and we have those zoning, um, rules in place. If we don't, we need to address the zoning. That's a code enforcement issue. I believe people oftentimes move into the county to have a little bit more freedom than living in a city. You have a, it's a different ballgame to live out in an unincorporated area. And if, if you live here and you have a business, that's not intruding on anyone else's property rights or privacy rights. I, I don't think it's any of our business to know that that business exists. Um, I believe in more personal freedom and less government, and this seems to me just an expansion of the government. We have to have someone to administer the program, monitor the license. Clearly, we, we would not make enough money to cover cost of it, it certainly would not be a, unless you charged a considerable amount of money, it would not be, um, something that generated any revenue. And I'm not in favor of generating revenue in that fashion. So I, I am against this, and I think it's unnecessary, and we need to just focus on the regulations and rules and laws that are already in place to protect residential neighborhoods and homeowners.
Chairman, I've, you know, we've brought this up several times, and I've had some of the same concerns that Commissioner Bryan has also. Um, a concern about bureaucracy and poor government involvement in, in lives. I do see a benefit, because I know of the issue that you were talking about, Don, and a, and a business license would have, you know, taken care of that, that issue, and that's, that's, that's a big issue. Um, I've, I've just got mixed emotions about it. I'm, I'm like Commissioner Bryan, so I don't know how to proceed with this one, and, and it's, I've been the same way. I've been kind of on the fence of this one for, for the last few years, every time it's, it's come up, but.
Well, you know, I'm, me being a business owner, you go through, throw something up in the county, you don't have to have no permit, you don't have to have a proper sized bathroom, you don't have to have nothing proper, because no one's coming around to check you to make sure that you do what needs to be done. I think the licenses, like you said, we don't even have to charge. The only thing, we want to make sure if you, if you do put up a, um, let's say a house alone, we want to make sure that you got a proper bathroom, so if somebody do come in, handicap can go to the bathroom. I mean, I, I can see where the license is in need, because we got lots of people starting to just put businesses up. We don't want to stop them from putting up a business. But there's a right way to do things, and there's a wrong way to do things. And sometimes doing things the wrong way, I think it could cause a lot more problems. So, I mean, ain't no different in the business license, telling a person doing a business, ain't no different in getting a license, a, a billing permit to put up your house. You just can't build your house in that kind of way.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Sure. Um, well, I, I do think it's a, it's a different issue if you have a business or if you are undertaking construction. But I have a question based on Commissioner Smiley's comment. Would you say if we passed this business license, that we would inspect to be certain that a business had the proper bathrooms, handicap access under, just under the auspices of the business license?
And it's apple, is, so when it goes in and builds a couple buildings on a piece of property within ten, located a business in there, and it has located a business in there, um, these couple buildings still happen with built without the benefit of a permit, and there's some regulation on how you build buildings, where, where you're going to run a business from. And, and two, um, they have put a considerable amount of money into the operation, not having to get a business license, no one to say upfront, well, you need to do this before you do that. And they have now spent a considerable amount of money. At some point in time, the county commission is going out to say, and they. At some point in time, the county commission is gonna have to say, and they need to close your doors. And I'm, what we're trying to do is keep that from having to come in front of the county commission. We could stop it, we could nip it in the bud early on before we spend life savings doing something. Then find out later, well, I, I shouldn't have done that. And, and this, we do have, we, we don't have zoning in the county. We do have land use regulations, we have allowable uses in the land use regulations. But, you know, we have all of that, certain things can be located only on an arterial or collector. But you put that same type business, a, a high intensity use business back in a residential community, it disrupts the community. And now, not only is the community disrupted, it spent a lot of money. And ultimately, the county commission will wind up saying, and then it's close your business. Trying to stop all that so we don't have to go to that point. We can nip it in the bud early on and, and most of that could be, be avoided.
Don, how, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Uh, how are we gonna, existing business, I mean, would this be a yearly thing that each business would have to get their occupation? So existing businesses would have to start, uh, the process, basically? Everybody else?
And we're not looking at, you know, it might not be exaggerated, we're not looking at making money. If we charge nothing for it, it would save you money, it would save you time, because time is money. We, I can pick out one and don't want to talk about it in the board meeting, but individually, beloved to, um, one issue that'd eat up a lot of our time. And it's gonna be a lot of heartache when it's all, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a heartache. And we didn't have to have that.
It, it still seems to me that it's a code enforcement issue. And that we have other departments in place. And I, I have a business in the city, I get a business license from the city. I just filled out my paperwork and I pay my fee every year. And they never look at what I'm doing or where I'm doing it or whether I'm doing it within any codes. They, they never do. It's really just every year, the business owner, and I'm a small business owner. So even though it's only, I think it's about thirty-five dollars maybe, it's not a lot of money for me. But I have to sit down every year and stroke that check and make sure I get that check in. So that's time away from my work. And I knew that when I started a business in the city, that that was part of being a, a business person in the city. But I, I believe that what you're trying to accomplish is, is a, is a goal that we should try to accomplish. But I don't think the business license is what gets us there. I think we need to look at, at our land development regulations. We need to pump up our, um, code enforcement department and get them more help. We only have one code enforcement officer and I think he has, he just has way too much for him to be able to handle. But I think these issues can be handled through other avenues. And I believe that, again, a, a business license is just not going to get us the end result that we may be looking for. And it's just more bureaucracy, so I, I still am against.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'll recognize you, I haven't got you, Mr. Hammond, go ahead.
Um, just, just to give the board an idea of another benefit of this licensure. I've been, um, working with the EZDA with Mr. Butler for years. And another benefit of this license is we've never, I have quarterly reports and annual reports that we have to do for the Enterprise Zone Development Agency. And a lot of businesses in unincorporated county do not take advantage of those, um, those things that the EZ can provide for them. And the reason they don't is because we don't know they exist. And we, we, we could be sending emails, we could be making contact with these businesses and helping them to take advantage of, um, all of the tax breaks, the equipment breaks and all of those things. But without a way to know what businesses are here, and I've tried everything from asking for assistance from the chamber, from the EDA and, and those things. But without knowing those businesses are here, we can't complete accurate reports. And so that, that is another benefit to this. And I've been striving, uh, with the Budget Committee for years to try to get this so that we can have an accurate accounting of what new businesses are here, how many employees they have. They have all kinds of incentives and tax breaks that they could take advantage of. And without knowing they're here, we can't help them and, and have no way of knowing who they are.
Chairman, I guess what, what the question is or what they're, what we're asking is, is to draft an ordinance. And so we'll go through the advertising process and we'll go through the review process for all our board members. I'm gonna reluctantly support drafting that ordinance, uh, taking the time to do that. And let me review, you know, how extensive that is. I've got, I've got these same concerns I've had over the years and the same concerns Commissioner Brian has, so. But I, I will reluctantly support moving forward with at least drafting an order. Hammond?
I'm just gonna follow up on Don's deal. And, and I think this has come up every year on the Budget Review Committee for more than ten years. It's been killed every year and I've opposed it most of the time. But, but Don's point is, is, is really what you need to look at, I, I believe. I've got a shed on my property, there's no, nothing that the county could do to stop me opening a grocery store there tomorrow. And I can spend twenty-five thousand dollars on the inside and fix it up and start. And then y'all gotta figure out what mechanism, my shed's been there for fifty years. So I don't have to go through the building department to build it, it's already there. And that's what we get, we get people getting residential sheds that they buy from Panama and they come set them up and pay two thousand dollars for. And then the next day they opened a lodger mat in it, or they've opened a beauty salon. And they spent their life savings, ten thousand dollars, buying all their beauty salon equipment. And then we send code enforcement over there and say, oh, you gotta shut down. Well, nobody told us, we didn't know. We didn't have to, we didn't have to buy a building license. So then the county's in a position of shutting them down after they've done all these things. If we stop it upfront, then it prevents the problem. And, uh, so I, I, I think we're to the point, we don't have enough controls. It, it's one thing to get the building department involved when you're building a new building. But when people are opening a building in something that's been there forever, which happens, and, and there are dozens of examples in Weewee that I see. The, the old Carl's barbecue has been twenty things in the last fifteen years, it seemed to be. It's been a video store and it's been a bar and it's been a cook deal, I mean, but meet handicap requirements. There are a lot of problems with those businesses. If they go, if they have a place to go upfront and say, what do I need to do to open a business in Guff County? Can you help me? What are the benefits? What do I need to know upfront? Then it stops the problems. And we've got some problems.
Yeah, I, okay.
So are you saying that if, if we had this business license and someone applies for it, like in your shed, grocery store, when they apply for that business license, would we send someone out there to inspect the shed and make sure it's meeting all of the requirements of that business?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's the way I would take it. Someone would go and say that you cannot have that business here, but you could put it X, Y, Z. Or if you put it here, this is what you gotta do to put it here. You gotta put in a handicap bathroom and, you know, the building department, all the things that they've got to do to meet the compliance. That's the way I interpret how it would work.
If I can add, um, you've, you've sent it down to the planning board over the last two years. They've discussed policies and it came up for the planning board on contractors, um, after the fact versus beforehand getting, you know, a slap on the wrist from the county. Um, and that, and that discussion has become business licenses for contractors. Um, and they've, I think they've come up with a tentative policy, but then it expanded to business licenses. One of the exceptions in there, as you all discussed this too, is the template that we've come up with thus far, and we haven't put an ordinance together, but it's a policy, is if the state through the DBPR regulates businesses in this county, certain licenses, professionals, um, certain types of operations, there's a fee associated with that. There's an exception in the policy that's been adopted that if you have a DBPR license, you indicate on the form what your license number is. It waives your fee because you're being regulated and supervised by the state. It's a, a, a double fee, if you will, if the county were to do the same. And then what that does is it filters it down to certain businesses that are not regulated by the state. Um, all businesses would need to fill out a form, if you have a state license, you indicate that. And then it identifies the location on that through the ordinance. So it would be bare bones, um, what we were striving for was to come up with one piece of paper, one form, which would not only protect the business owners, Mr. Butler and Mr. Hammond talked about, from them investing too much. It also is a public safety issue about the neighboring community and to, under the land use regulation. So, um, you, we, we've come up with some templates and policies on the planning board, you've evolved instructors too in the last two years. We can try to formalize that and come back, circulate amongst the commission before we go to a public hearing, we could discuss it further so you understand the impact to different types of businesses. You're talking about farm stands on the side of the road versus, uh, you know, beauticians versus contractors versus handymen. There's different levels of types of businesses that are regulated by the state. And I think that would be defined in the actual guidelines that the county would provide to you all, just to review.
And what about, you know, Timmy Smith who mows the lawns in his neighborhood and has his equipment, but he's collecting funds? I mean, where do we cut off that?
Right. The, 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 one of the determining things in a business license is when you have customers actually come to the property. So parking, handicap parking, accessibility, handicap ramps, bathroom accessibility. Timmy, the lawn care cutter, has lawn mowers on his property, but he's not receiving customers there. He's going out and providing services throughout the community. Those things are distinguished in, in ordinance.
And also, Mr. Chairman, if I just, I would like to address one issue. And that is that the issue of us being able to reach out to businesses to let them know about incentives. I think that we should advertise that, we should put that out, make it very accessible to the public. But there's a lot of businesses that are not interested in incentives, they just want to be left alone. And so I don't believe that that is a, um, reason for us to have a business license. And I just want to put that out there because, um, we nev, we definitely need to get the word out so anybody who's interested knows that those incentives are out there. But if you're a business that's not interested in incentives, you should not have to register with the government just because of that purpose, so that we know you're out there. And I, I am against any license that's put in place so that we know that you're out there.
Chairman, the only other thing I would say is, I'm okay with drafting something up, but I would, you, you mentioned bare bones, I would keep it at bare bones. And let's don't affect the guy that might even, I see a guy out there at the Cape selling honey, well, he's providing a service. But he's not, he's out there two days a week, you know, for, for a few months during the summer. I don't want to regulate that guy. I, I don't want us getting into that, that type of regulation, you know. I would keep it at bare bones and, and then let us review it and, and then I'll make up a mind again whether I want to support it or not.
Here's, uh, I think where we're coming at and, uh, as it so happens, Mr. Butler, one of the, uh, uh, and we won't call any names, I don't like to do that here. But, uh, in your neighborhood, primarily what this is for, we have resident, I, I can show you up in Weewee Hetchgah. Person using their carport, outboard motor repair. Boats and motors sitting in the ditch, back in here and there and all hours. You know, it's really that's a neighborhood, residential neighborhood. And, uh, running outboard motor repair shop right in the middle of it. And, uh, you know, people's gotta come there and leave. Now, getting back again, just like, uh, the attorney said, cosmetology, you have to have a state license, no matter if you're in the city or the county. And, uh, that license would cover what we're trying to do, they are regulated business. But as far as the, I don't know where this thing could, I was roomed out, the, uh, gentleman selling the honey or someone where you walk up and you take out. But if you, uh, turn a business into where you walk in with just like a restaurant, I know that falls under the Department of Health involved there too. You should have to comply to certain things there, you do that. We know what you're doing and if something goes wrong, uh, you know.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, um, at the planning board meeting, there was open discussions. We had contractors come to the podium, I believe Dr. Hardman came at one point. And it was an issue specifically with regards to contractors, I'm using as an example, but there were people with and without licenses. And in the county, for, for the public to hire someone to do something. And the cost and the overhead to have a license to operate your business, to have a storefront, to accept customers, there's a distinction there too. So the businesses that do pay the fees and that do pay the handicap parking and that do pay those fees in competition with the businesses that don't. And so the license there obviously draws some distinction, not telling people what they can and can't do, just who they are. And that's one of the issues that were brought up at the planning board. That, I think it probably was over five or six months ago, David, but part of public record, uh, we can go back and get the minutes and offer that to you all because that was a discussion from the public, it wasn't, it was received by your, uh, planning board from contractors.
One other thing, I'll quit, Commissioner Brian, let's, uh, on this. I heard what you said earlier. We have a business, I've got a pile of them in mind. What you were saying with code enforcement, we send code enforcement out this morning, tell that gentleman, he's out of compliance, he's gotta lock his doors, shut his business down.
Well, I, I'm not sure what.
Once they, it's, once the old weeds get established in the lawn, it's hard to get them out of there.
I, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, what business you're talking about. It was a little cryptic what, what you've said, but I would say overall.
If a business springs up and, uh, it shouldn't be there, do we send code out and just tell them, you gotta shut your doors? We'll take the county, I apologize for saying it because I know this particular area.
Well, if, if your, if your neighbor was violating the code in some other fashion, would you want code enforcement to come out and tell them that they had to stop? I mean, that's why we have a code. And that's why we have a code enforcement officer. And I think that in some circumstances, we have to allow time for someone to, um, remedy the situation if they're in violation of the code. But that's the whole reason that the laws exist. We are supposed to operate within the law and within the code. So yes, if there's something that's going on that's in violation of the code, I do think code enforcement needs to address the issue. Do I think they have to take a heavy hand that would be harmful and, um, overreaching? No, but, but it has to be addressed and we need to work with that person to get it addressed. And, and I don't think you can judge which violation is okay and which violation isn't okay. If we have a viol, if we have a code that's inappropriate, then we need to change it. That, that's how I feel about it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you're in violation, you're in violation.
So I would send code enforcement out to talk to the person who is in violation, to see if they are in violation and then to work with them. And, I mean, that, for me, that goes with all laws and statutes and we are a, a governing body. We are here, we are supposed to operate within the bounds of the law.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. And I, that is one thing that I agree with on this argument, is the fact that we may can, can, can prevent us from getting to the point that we've got to enforce, uh, enforce some other code enforcement violation. At least maybe we have the opportunity to educate some folks that want to put a business in the community. So that's the positive side of it. I still have reservations, I, I'm, I'm okay with doing a bare bones draft for all of us to review and to have input in and, and, and go forward. I see the benefit of it, I see the pitfalls of, of more government bureaucracy too. But I, I'm okay with, with a, a, a rough draft.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't want to get too deep with business license where we're gonna stop a person from starting a business. But you guys got to realize a bunch of these major businesses, they started in garages. So I, I'm not saying that I want to jump on them that, what I want to do, I want to be able to put a guide together. And just like we telling everybody where they can go swim and where they can go get something to eat at and where they can go spend the night. But they might not know what type of services that we got to offer right here in Guff County. And right now, they kinda can't tell what we got to offer in Guff County. I mean, a, a person who working on guns, a blacksmith, a, a, a gunsmith, somebody who working on a gun. How many gun shops do we have around here? I know we got a couple around here, but do we know that they're around here? I don't want to put nobody out of business, I don't want to stop. My intention is just to know what's going on in Guff County. So we could put together a guide. And you own that guide up, you know, we got X amount of, um, barbecue shops in Guff County? We got X amount of house salons in Guff County? You know where they located at in Guff County? We got tourists coming here every day, we got businesses right here today that people are operating. So I'm not after the guys in the garage because a bunch of garages go off to make great things. You know, so that, I just want to be able to, I want to be able to identify where they located it. And we can get it out to our tourists when they come to town, the people who live in town. I mean, I went to Howard Creek one time to get a gun worked on, I didn't even know the guy worked on guns out there. And I live here in Saint Joe all my life. All I'm saying is something to identify what's going on in Guff County.
All right, one moment.
That is a, a business owner's option to be placed in a guide. If we want to, if we decide that we want to create a guide, then we open it up and we let a business owner choose to be in that guide. But if a business owner does. But if a business owner doesn't want to be in the guide, they shouldn't have to be.
But we don't have to create a guide. Gulf County need to know what's going on. Gulf County-
I disagree. If you have a business and you're not violating any other code or rules, then it's none of our business that they're there.
Okay, what about the ones that are violating?
Well, that's why we have codes and rules and regulations in place. We should be enforcing those through the mechanisms that are in place. And if we don't have a strong enough mechanism in place, we need to address those rules. I do not believe that this business license will-
All right. Mr. Jaeger, you was going to put a motion for-
I'll, I'll put the, a motion on the floor to, to draft. We'll have much more public comment. We'll have public hearings, much more comment from our, our commissioners. Once we get the draft together, we can just dispense the draft to all five commissioners and make comments on that. So I'll put the form of a motion that we proceed with, with drafting this.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, so we've got a motion, uh, by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Smiley down here. Okay. Anything from the public? Any more discussion here? I think any opposition to it?
I'm opposed.
All right. Motion passed four and one. All right, let's go.
Mr. Chairman, next one is MSBU. The recommendation is to solicit proposals for a consultant to perform a study that will assist the county in the implementation of the MSBU funded mandatory garbage pickup program. And the reason for the study is for someone, some knowledgeable firm to determine who should pay, the, the intent is to be able to get our- I call. The intent is to, um, to get an issue on the tax bill to pay, pay garbage fee one time a year and get a reduction in what it costs garbage. We now have, for the first time, we now have, um, the rates from the garbage company being Waste Pro. You can save three dollars a month if you, if we pay it as a single payer. And so we have about 3,000 customers, three, three dollars a month. That's $9,000 a month that the county people wouldn't have to send to Bay County in 12 months out of the year. And it would probably cost $25,000, $30,000 for a study. And it may hopefully, I mean, maybe not, but it, it may cost $20,000, $25,000 for a study. But we can, we can find out what one would cost. If we had a study and then someone said, I want to challenge you, I want to challenge you. I, I don't think that my red barn, you know, how we said in the one should be paying a garbage fee. Well, if we wind up in court, we want to wind up winning in court. We don't want to lose in court. So the reason for the study is to keep us, keep us straight. And without a study, I wouldn't recommend we do it. But if we ever going to go, and it can't, it cannot be done this year, you know, we'd, we'd have to do a study and it would be, um, October 15 before we could even think about doing it, um, putting on a tax bill for that year. And it'd be a single payer system. We got, we already got the rates from Waste Pro, what it costs. It would save about $3 a month on, on the garbage bill by doing so, and for the board's consideration. If we, if we want to do MSBU, we need to do a study.
Chairman? Now, we've talked about MSBU's for a lot of different things. Did the, did the budget committee talk about MSBU's for any other thing? And if we did a study, would one study have to be done for each MSBU that you do?
Yeah, each, each element. Yeah, that's right. We, we have done, we've done this type of study before when we did the, the fees we charged at the building department, uh, impact fees. They had to study jail, had to study parks, had to study EMS, had to study each, everything we were doing and determine what the rates were. This case, uh, this is a BU, the rates are going to be the same, but do we charge the guy in the RV? It's like we do with a guy in the middle of our house, and that's for someone that needs to figure it out ahead of time so we don't get in trouble later on.
Mr. Chairman, I support that. I've supported it all along. I, I support the MSBU process, whether it's garbage or anything else. So I'll put a motion on the floor for that.
Motion. Your second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner.
One in the audience. Further discussion here with board members? Any opposition? No opposition?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Commissioner McLemore. Motion passed four to one. Opposition?
Mr. Chairman, the next one, again, from the Budget Review Committee. We're recommending that county commission request the city of Port Saint Dode to reduce and/or eliminate DRA proceeds for the upcoming and future years. DRA is, we don't see a lot of value for, for the county. Um, and, and until the board tells us not to put it on our list again, um, it'll probably wind up on the list again if it doesn't go anywhere. But if we're looking at, we're not going to, we're not growing fast. It looks like we're going to grow about 2%. The cost of what the state's passing on to us is a lot more than what the amount of growth we have. And it certainly would be a way to save some money for county taxpayers.
On what was the contribute? 150,000 from our taxpayers this, on 31? Or what?
About 130,000.
I, I, I mean, we've, we've requested the city to do this before, but I, I don't think it'll go anywhere. I'm, I'm okay for asking them to reduce it some. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
I, I just have a, a question. Under, I, I believe we have two different redevelopment areas that were started at different times. I, I'm not certain. I believe that's what it is. So under the statute, are they permitted to just reduce or eliminate in either area at, at any time that they desire? Do we know?
Well, we know for 10 years they didn't ask for any. And I think if they, if the city doesn't ask for it, then we don't have to pay it. For 10 years, they didn't ask for any, so we didn't have to pay it.
Okay, so they can have that area in place and just not request that funding from the county?
Well, that worked for 10 years.
It says right here, reduce and/or eliminate, so.
I, I'm just a, a little uncomfortable with voting on this today because I, I'm not certain that I, I have all the information and understand. If, if we're going to make that request of the city, if you were going to come back with more information of what we're going to request of the city, I would definitely consider that. But I'm uncomfortable with telling you to go ahead with that request to the city when I, when I don't really know all the information and, and what the legalities are of what the city is committed to. So I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable today with the amount of information that we have.
Motion move forward, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second for discussion, Mr. Chairman. Don't we have a joint meeting coming up with the port, the city and the county?
We do, we're trying to get an agenda, we're to have a meeting with the city. Now, we do have a meeting-
That's what I was going to say. If, if we could work an agenda and put that on the agenda item, we could at least have that discussion and we, you don't have to put it in the form of a letter. You can have that, you can have it on the agenda and have a discussion about it then. And I would like to have a discussion about another item on, on there too. I, I mean, they're, they're talking about our bay and those type of things. So might be worth putting, putting that on that, at that agenda too. But I think it'd be appropriate time. You might not even need to send a letter. You might can just have that discussion and see what their feelings are on it.
My motion was over with.
Are, are you okay with, with just discussing it at the, okay. I, I, I'm okay with leaving my second there if it's just for, not necessarily sending a letter, but let's discuss it in our joint meeting.
Okay.
Just, you want- Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, tentatively, I think, and I believe I sent an email to you all, but Wednesday next week, the Port Authority had extended an invitation to the cities in the county to meet in the EOC at 10 o'clock, immediately following the Port Authority meeting. And that now has, uh, the discussions continued that since getting you all together, they want to obviously do a workshop immediately after that Port Authority meeting. So 10 o'clock would be the Port Authority, cities, county meeting. And immediately after that, the city and the county would, are trying to put an agenda together for a, a joint workshop. And that's where we put this on the agenda.
Okay.
All right. Motion on the floor, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any input? Further discussion? Any opposition? We will proceed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, this next one is not a big one, but it, it could save the counties some money. And what we're saying here is to initiate monthly accrual of annual leave instead of annual accrual of annual leave. And to, to boil it on down, if I'm going to leave in November, I'm going to leave in October. I'm going to retire. I'm going to get out. I may choose to hang around until January to get my four, five, six weeks vacation. And if we could, and it's, it should be revenue neutral to the county. It shouldn't cost the county anything. If, if I so choose to get out in September, anyone, I'm using myself as an example. And I'll get out in September and we're doing a monthly accrual. And there's, there's no reason to be hang around and just hang around and take up space until January 1st so I can get my another four, five, six weeks vacation. So I think it should be revenue neutral and could even save the county some money if we could change the way, instead of 1st of January, put in four weeks vacation on the books. Just put that four weeks of, uh, vacation on the books monthly, take the four weeks divided by 12 and put it on the books that way. So it should be revenue neutral and could even save some money.
I'm all for that. I think private, private enterprise does that also, but, you know. So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Seconded by Commissioner Smiley. One. Further discussion on this? Opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
And, Mr. Chairman, just so we're all clear, our intent is to do this in January to, to, in order to make it fair for everyone, come January, everyone's going to get the leave they've already made this year. And then starting after that, next annual allocation is put on the books. And then, then, um, everyone will start accruing their monthly, monthly rate instead of waiting another year and then get that, that year is put on, on the books.
Good deal. Roger, next.
Mr. Chairman, I have, whatever did, we listed, I listed everything here to do with outside agencies. And we always put, some of these outside agencies have had a budget reduction, a lot that the county commission has and the constitution officers have over the last several years. But the issue at hand is reduce and/or eliminate outside agency funding. A few years ago, dealing with, with Bay County, they had, they had actually got down at that point in time to, to eliminate all outside funding except senior citizens. And they, they would just find it hard to do to eliminate senior citizens. But just for your information, I, I, I gave you senior citizens, Humane Society, library, chamber, ARC and coordinated transportation. And if the board could look at those to, to cut or eliminate, then that could, that could be some revenue. Other counties have done it and just putting it on the list.
Mr. Butler, let me ask you about the Humane Society. We have 48,000 there. Do we, we don't fund them that much money, do we? I thought it was $15,000 that we budgeted them for last year.
This is what you, we're pumping into Humane Society, 48,600 a year.
That's money.
Money.
Chairman, if we could take these one at a time, I, I'd, I'd take them one at a time. But so many of these have a, a benefit to, to the county, just, just like the Humane Society. I mean, uh, they do a service to the, to the community. We've got one dog catcher, and if we didn't have the Humane Society, I'd just, you know, it'd cost the taxpayer a whole lot more money. They're doing, and Humane Society does some of their own fundraising. This isn't all the funds that they get. They do their own fundraising and those type of things. So, uh, while I, I just think that, that they're like fire departments. They save the community and the taxpayer money. And I mean, seniors, if we go down the list, you know, the only one that I would consider, you know, reducing, and that would be because we're, we're doing economic development now, be reducing the chamber. But the rest of them, they serve a community purpose. And as much as we hate it, government is supposed to provide a service to the community, some services to the community. And, and those on there, I'm, I'm in support of. I'm in support of the senior citizens. I'm supportive of the Humane Society, the library, the ARC and the coordinated transportation. If I would consider any of them, it would be the chamber.
I, uh-
I'm for it.
All right. And, and I would agree with you, Mr. Jaeger. You can go right on down the list, senior citizens, like, just like you have, you know, the Humane Society. They, the Humane Society saves, saves the taxpayer a ton of money, a ton of money. So I'm on the same rig you're with. The only one I would consider would be the chamber. Well, it's supposed to be self-supporting anyway. All we're doing, we can take this $10,000, put it over on EDA, where we can get something out of it. We have the EDA now in place, you know, and, and I just-
Eliminate it if we're going to move it. I'll, I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor that we save all these agencies. I mean, except the, the $10,000. I think we should put that in the EDA. So I'm, I'm in favor of not reducing these, uh, these, these groups except for the chamber. And I'll put that form of the motion.
We're going, we're going to save, we're going to save everything on here except the chamber.
All right, you placed a motion on the floor. You seconded the motion. Anyone out here in the audience, any further discussion here with a board member? Do what, dear?
I did.
Oh, Mr. McLemore. All right. Discussion right here.
I mean, and I, I brought it up again another year, and I'm going to bring it up again. And I know some, some of the young animal lovers don't want to hear what I'm going to say, but if we put, uh, walking your dogs on the beach, that can offset some of that. I mean, I, I mean, if we put a permit, walk your dog on the beach. I mean, people come from Bay County just to walk their dogs on our beach because it's free.
We've actually, uh, we've actually got some, uh, discussions with overhauling the beach ordinance and those type of things. That can be in the discussion. We've actually upped the driving permit fee, which has helped some. And so we, we can have that discussion in this.
All right, and we have a motion, a second, there's no discussion. Uh, we're going to eliminate the chamber 10,000. Any opposition? Not. Motion passed five and oh.
That's all we have. Recommendation from the Budget Review Committee.
Thank you. All right, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, on budget, when will we have our first budget hearings?
We'll have you a balanced budget by the 15th of, of July. And it will be up to you when you start having your workshops after that. Your hearings will start much later, but-
Okay. Next item will be item B, economic development, affordable housing, industrial park. I think that's still in your court.
Mr. Chairman, we've put this on the agenda. We, there's some urgency to this. The reason we went ahead and put it on the agenda and get it talked about today instead of waiting next week to talk about it. We had a good meeting yesterday. Mr. Chairman was in the meeting with us, uh, with Ms. Millie Smith. She's been talking with Lynn and Tuan for, for a pretty good while. She's, she's with the, um, Rural Veterans of Florida. And she is trying to, to locate in Gulf County to, and utilize the county's industrial park to train vets in various trades from electrical, plumbing, mechanical, carpentry, to, in the building trades and, and other trades, uh, in, in sync with either the VOTEC out of Bay County or the Gulf Coast State College. And they, they have made it offering. I give you a copy of, of the letter of intent from Millie Smith. And they would like to lease the industrial park building. We have talked to you before about leasing the industrial park building. But what's a little bit different here is, and not, not that the board is going to today say, yes, we're going to do this. But what they would like to be able to do is utilize a portion and of the 200 acres of affordable land that's in Honeyville to build affordable housing for veterans and low to moderate income people, very low and low and moderate income people. And, and to get it, get it moving, they would like to be in this building by August 1st. We don't know if it's going to work or not, but we, we, we would hope it would work. They're going to employ, uh, up and going, it'll be like a hundred people. They're going to employ, up and going, it'll be like 100 people, because some of these people are going to be trained in helping in the building trades and building some of these affordable houses, but there's a lot to be worked out on it. We just spent from 11 o'clock to after 12:30 yesterday working with them. She had assembled a group from Huntsville, Alabama, from Enterprise, Alabama, from South Georgia. We had a good group of people that have done this type of thing before, and if the board will allow us to go ahead and make a request to the EDA in Atlanta to see if they will accept what they would like to do, the Rural Veterans of America would like to do here, and then, and you be conscious of, if they could get to do what they want to do here, they would like to come back to you and deal with you on the affordable housing land, and they would be working up like a master plan for the 200 acres or maybe 100 acres of 200 acres and show where the houses and the buildings would be and the recreation park would be, and all that would have to be later on agreed to by the County Commission, not asking you to agree today, but just, it's not going to do them any good locating the building and later on saying, no, we're not going to deal on that land. And the land can only be used for affordable housing, so we think that's the way it can be done. And we talked all about that yesterday, that, you know, it's not over till the County Commission votes on it. But if the board would let us to make contact with EDA, and then Millie Smith and group would know, you know, if we can get that step under our belt, and then it's up to them to make the other part work. So, it could be huge. It could be big, and she had, he had Art Tech and Dofen here, the same architect that had done the design work here on the courthouse and other buildings in Gulf County, and she had assembled a great group to talk. But for your consideration, if we could, looking at, they had made an offer like $4,000 a month, which is considerable amount more than what we've got in the past for the industrial park building, and if we can go ahead and shoot it to Atlanta, we'd like to get it to them today, but just, we just ask you to be conscious of, they would want to deal with the board on the affordable housing land.
That's the second phase of it. They want to get this step over first, and let me say, I sat in on a very lengthy meeting and very professional people, and this group, they know what they're talking about, and it'd be a good boost for Gulf County, surely would, and for our veterans here, people retiring in the area, people with handicaps coming here and being Gulf County, and it'd be great for us, and it won't happen overnight, at least we can start here, get them working and let them know that this board will work with them. Having said, Mr. Butler, do you need, now, you'll have to go to the EDA. One thing about the building, did they have the opportunity yesterday to stop and look at the building? I don't know. I left that. Did Mr. Mclemore?
I did.
All I got to do is walk in, I mean, it's Mr. Moina, he left it 10 times better than what he walked into there with, got a fine building, all they have to do is have the power, water turned on, and they could be in business tomorrow. So, that's where we're at. Yeah, yeah, I'd like a motion. A motion by Commissioner Smiley, seconded by Commissioner. All right.
Chairman, I have a question.
Let me go here. Anybody here first? All right, all right, now we're going to come here, we'll be back at the board. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just have a question regarding the letter of intent. They stated in the letter of intent that Mr. Adams, the founder of Cedar Band Corporation, that he's agreed to fully finance this project. Are they referring to just the lease or to both aspects of the project? The affordable housing on in as well?
I'm not saying clear, real clear at this point in time. The, what I discussed yesterday was Gulf County has the land, can only be used for affordable housing. There's a lot of grant opportunities, and Millie Smith threw out a lot of grant opportunities, especially when veterans are included, and financing for housing and infrastructure on right of ways, all that would, and we made it clear, too, Gulf County doesn't have any money to put into the project, but we will, and I made sure they knew I was not speaking for the board, but typically the County Commission has supported them developments to go in and put infrastructure on the right of way, because it'll wind up being county right of ways, county property, county right of ways, and water sewer, roadways, those things that we can assist by supporting them, because some grants you can only get if you're a government. Private can't get some grants that governments gets. But at the same time, not taking any of our ad loan money and putting it into the project because we don't have any.
I think they understood that clearly yesterday. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smiley, seconded by Commissioner Mclemore, to proceed with the EDA and the, to rent or lease or whatever, the attorney and attorney will draw it up. Any more from the?
No, I'm good with that, as long as we've made it clear that we don't have any ad loan dollars to pump into that program. I'm good.
They left yesterday knowing that. All right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the case, I'll, I'll set it. All right, any opposition? You have the motion. No, you have the motion.
Yes.
All right, no opposition, motion passed, five and oh. Proceed with the industrial park.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, one last thing I have on EDA. We have it on the agenda. We are in the process, it's going to take a while to make the transition to taking the EDA, and at some point in time, the intent is have EDA housed at the TDC building. My understanding, the last TDC meeting, that there was concern by some TDC members that EDA located in that building. My suggestion to you is, you know, to allow that to happen, it's a logical place for it to happen, so TDC and EDC can work together, and I don't know, and Jennifer can tell if it came out in the form of a recommendation or not, maybe it didn't, but I know there was a concern by some citizens, some members of the TDC that EDA should not locate in that building.
Ms. Jenkins, would you give us a little light on that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At our meeting on Tuesday, this issue was discussed. Ms. Kapinski was also at the meeting with me. The concern was that the TDC, the building is already at capacity. We've made some plans for some temporary solutions until everything is sorted out, and, but my counsel wanted me to bring this issue and their concern over it in front of you to let them know what their voice was.
Mr. Chairman, my thought on this is, I've always been a supporter of groups combining and have that conversation, and I think right now tourism is our economic driver, along with the prison and some of the other, you know, bratfields and wood fisheries and all those kinds of things, but I'm in full support. Now, if we need to make some type of modification, we need to review that and see, can we add a room on to underneath the ports there or that type of thing, but I'm for collaboration. And I know there's concern with how much involvement that you put into that over your tourism, you know, your number one priority is the tourism and that type of thing, but in saying that tourism is our economic development driver, you need to be intimately aware of what we're promoting in our community, and so I'm in favor of that, having it, housing it down with the TDC. I wish we had a large building that we could have even more, but I'm in favor of that.
And Commissioner Jaeger, and Mr. Chairman, the discussion went, and Mr. Novak was part of the discussion as well, is to have tourism part of the discussion regarding economic development. So, if there is an industry that wants to come in, if we want a smokestack industry, how does that affect tourism and what we do? So, we're part of the discussion, not eliminated from the discussion, and that's where it went in. And speaking with some of my council members after, I mean, they do understand, you know, that part of the equation.
All right. Mr. Chairman, and I know, Ms. Jenkins, they'd made a comment about cohabitation versus collaboration at the meeting. They expressed some concerns about the facility down there, not only for the staff, but also, I guess, recruiting industry leaders or business formal settings such as that, of having a welcome center and then the conference room next to that, and obviously, I know I'm talking to Ms. Jenkins, that if those types of settings are required, that the county's facility here and the conference room and other venues for business, private business meetings with an EDA function can also be used for other facilities, and that was a discussion. So, I know some of the TDC members had mentioned that, but that was a concern of theirs, and hopefully that's alleviated by the use of some other county facilities for business folks that come to the community.
And the other concern, just to let you know, was readjusting some of the duties of my existing staff, and I, we can do that without missing a beat for tourism. I do have another full-time marketing person that came in, and so, and it's all new, it's not mapped out yet, but I brought it to my counsel's attention because I didn't want them to not understand some of the discussion if they're not here and following what the commissioners have decided to do with the EDC.
Well, we'll continue as planned. We'll continue as planned unless the board tells us differently.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next and final item, Gulf Pines Proposal, City of Port Saint Joe, Attorney, Mr. Novak. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you.
Just a minute. Did you?
I'm good.
Okay, I apologize. All right, you have the floor.
The last two regular commission meetings, I was asked to bring to you all the city's proposals with regards to resolving the Gulf Pines Hospital and what the future of that facility is going to be with the city, and we've discussed it your last two regular meetings. I've since been provided a proposal or breakdown of costs. I forwarded it to you all, Commissioners, a few days back. I put a copy of it up there on your dais for you all to have another copy in front of you. I wanted to present it to you, entertain, obviously, any questions that if I'm able to answer. If I'm not, I would encourage you all, if possible, we can add this to the agenda for your city-county workshop next week so that the 10 of you can have an open dialogue as to costs and expectations going forward on resolving that, so.
Sure. What, Mr. Chairman and Attorney, what are the city's expectations of the county's involvement in this process? Because I see a pretty hefty total figure. Is it just the, just the working with the taxes?
It's working with the taxes, and also they've addressed initially how they're going to go about the remediation of the asbestos, the hauling, the tipping with our landfill as it currently stands. So, that, they haven't gotten into specifics, but I think that is something they want to discuss with the county, and hopefully you can encourage them to do that next week at your joint meeting.
Any good item on that?
You don't need any.
I don't. I wanted you to have it. I wanted to bring it up, and I wanted to let you all know that between now and next week, if you have questions, and I've obviously had some discussions with Mr. Gibson, and we will certainly put on the agenda unless there's any objections, so you're all prepared to ask and discuss it.
Butler, anything else? Anyone stand? Any board members? Mr. Mclemore, there we go. Motion seconded, we out of here. Thank you.
[laughing]